We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. All of the board members have a copy of the agenda in front of them. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
We have a motion by Cindy.
Second.
Second by Brian. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. The next is approval of the March 11, 2008 Regular in Closed Session Board of Education Meeting Minutes. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
So move.
A motion by Dick.
Second.
Second by Brian. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the minutes are approved. Next, we'll move on to the Students, Staff, Community recognition. Sandy?
Thank you. We have several programs and our students to recognize this evening. We'll start first with the Willow River Noon Book Club. And with us this evening, we'll let you come on forward Wendy, is Wendy Draper. Wendy actually, four years ago, was a parent volunteer in the building, still is pretty involved as a parent volunteer. But this year, she also became a long-term sub in our district, so she's changing hats and roles a little bit. But she created and brought to Willow River the Noon Book Club, and has been organizing and making that happen. So we'll let Wendy share a little bit. And she does have three slides behind you if you want to check that out. Wendy, we'll let you go to the mic and then walk us through.
Good evening. It's the first time I've ever done something like this, so apologize if I'm nervous or rattle on here. My husband helped me put it together so we can keep it in line. If you take a look at the slides here, I did start the book clubs seven years ago. When we moved here four years ago, I approached Pat and asked if we could bring this program that I developed over there into our schools. We started it after spring break in second grade, and had the kids come in during lunchtime. The way it works is the kids get a book, we all read the same title, you read half the book, we come and we discuss over lunch the book, they go back, they read the second half, two weeks later, they come back and they meet during their lunch and their recess to discuss the second half of the book. Sometimes by the time, actually, we're transitioning our fourth graders over with this book at this point, to meet once every three weeks and read the whole book. In fifth grade, usually, that's what they choose to do too, because they're ready to jump in and read the whole book at that point. Our second graders, Pat and I had discussed quite a bit about my experience, is that it's best to wait until after spring break with second graders, because you have more books to talk about, you have more meat in the books, the maturity is there, it's also a good training ground, a springboard, to get them ready for third grade. So when we jump into it in third grade, they're ready to go. I think you can click again. It is organized by grade level, primarily because of the lunch schedule. And it is a totally voluntary program. We come out at the beginning of the year, come in and do a little short presentation. The kids then choose to get a permission slip, bring it home, and come back. They can drop in and out anytime they want to. Sometimes they'll drop out during hockey season, or they'll drop out during the spring, if the weather gets nice, especially that first, like right now, we'll have a few drop out, and then they'll come back in May. But it's totally voluntary. They typically, like I said, meet every other week. It's the same book that we all read, they are reading it at home, so that way, a parent can read it to it, they can listen to the book on tape, and then they come back and we discuss it. We meet in classrooms, you can see up there, common areas, conference room, just about any place that we can find spaces, which has gotten a little challenging this year, but we've still been able to meet. It's led by volunteers, usually parents, although we have had some community members from the public library step in too. This year, I added a volunteer training. This is my background, with a master's in curriculum development, that's how it kind of got going. I wanted to give parents some more comfort level in questioning techniques that they could use, and some group management. So we did do a little after-school training with my parent volunteers, and then I check in with them whenever my schedule permits, just to make sure everybody's comfortable, and that it remains unique from the classroom. It's not comprehension questions we're using, it's not, you know, what color dress did she wear, it's why did she choose to wear that dress? And so that you can get to a whole higher level of talking. And that's what the kids really appreciate. And it's interesting, because that's the feedback that I didn't necessarily predict, but that's the feedback I'm getting from teachers, is the kids that are in these book clubs turn around and they're no longer happy, satisfied with the simple questions anymore. They keep asking bigger questions, because that's what they're used to doing in our book clubs. We're very lucky, because Willow River, I went to Willow River Parent Group first, and they funded me to get a couple sets of books to start out. Then Pat had approached me when she sat in on all the book clubs, and said, "If I gave you $1,000, what could you do with it?" Went right away and started shopping for books, and said, "We'll figure out a way to get it across board," because that's always been... The friend and I who started it, our mission was to get to as many kids as we wanted to to turn them into lifelong readers. We kind of, walking around our neighborhood, came up with this goal, and that's what we've been working towards, and that's the mission I still hold to with it. So, we got it going with the $1,000, and then the Education Foundation gave us a grant three years ago, which was wonderful. Now we have over 1,000 books, 50 titles, each of my parent group volunteer, or each of my volunteers can choose from up to 12 titles, which is kind of fun, because the groups do different, their reading level, their interests differ, so they have some choices as they're choosing the books. This right here was kind of an exciting picture. I had a parent, or actually, a grandmother, approached me that has some connection with the Education Foundation, and asked me when I called home for something, "How are your book clubs going?" And I said, "How do you even know about my book clubs?" You know, this is a grandmother. She said she had a connection, and she knew that this was funded. And she said, "You know, the sad thing about the foundation is they never hear how things went after the money's been spent," often. So I had asked Pat, "What do you think if we get all of our kids together, take a big group picture, so they can see how many kids were impacted by this grant, and allow the kids to give a little feedback?" And this surpassed anything that, my photographer, who also has a daughter in the book clubs, when we put it together, I said, "Ann, take a picture." She was right up against the stairs to start out with, and we kept moving back, it kept moving back, as all these kids came. I just, I didn't even realize how many kids had been part of it. There's 119, Erin Danielson counted for me, there's 119 there, and we know some are missing, because they came later and said, "What time's the picture?" Too late now. But that also doesn't include the second grade book clubs, who just started last week for their first meeting, and there are 22 in our second grade book clubs, and it doesn't count the fifth graders that have already moved on to Hudson Middle School. So it's very exciting that we have all these kids involved. This year, we have 22 second graders, 40 third graders, they're split into two groups. I was lucky enough to get four parent volunteers, so we could split them to little smaller numbers. We have 18 fourth graders and 25th graders. And like I said, the numbers are always flexible, because it's not mandatory, it's according to what the kids... And sometimes the child will be in it for a year, drop out for a year, and then come back a year later. It's kind of fun to see what they do. Their activities, the time of year, and even the title are all things that impact whether they choose to do the book that month. Like I said before, we have over 1,000 books and 50 titles, so we're pretty excited about what's going on here. I don't know if there's any questions, or did I stay under five minutes? That's the...
Yeah. Thanks Wendy, and thanks for your work with the program. Any questions regarding the book club? Again, thank you a lot.
Thanks Wendy. Next, we're pleased to announce that the 2008 Wisconsin All-State Scholars Program/Robert C. Byrd Honor Scholarship recipients, that announcement has been out. And in Congressional District III, there are 15 recipients, and total, there were 119 across the state. In District III, we have three from Hudson High School, Charlie Hammond, Michael Harper, and Cynthia Kochic. And I have to look, it's hard to see up there, but Mr. Lucas, is anyone able to attend? I know they're busy. Come on down, come on down. Harper made a speech. Why don't you come right up to the mic, Charlie? So we have Charlie and Cynthia with us, and can you explain a little bit about the scholarship?
We don't know a whole lot about it so far, but $1,500 to attend any school of our choice, right? It doesn't have to be within the state, so it's really a great help for us wherever we go.
All right. Congratulations, we're very proud of all three of you. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Cynthia?
Seniors.
Seniors.
Well, seniors.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Good luck with your...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Dan Coke today, I'm going to slide one more in here, also asked me to announce that on April 5, members of our middle school, the Young Naturalists, competed in a horticulture contest at UWRF. The students were tested on elements of plant parts, function, and identification, in addition to landscape principles. So you kind of have a little idea what's going on with the garden there. The students made up five teams, they took first through fifth place. And so, I'm not even going to try to attempt to read all the names, but I'll pass that piece around. Cindy Landers leads that effort, and she put together that document for us. And then finally, we have this evening with us, we have the recipients of National History Day. They took, we have three students that took first place at regionals, and will be going on to state competition. And with us tonight is their advisor, their coach, Mike Yell, 7th grade social studies teacher at the middle school. And then the three students are Casey Delgado, Floyd Johnson, and Kiara Lebrun. And I believe we have Floyd and Kiara with us this evening. So why don't you come right up to the mic as well? Mr. Yell can give us a little synopsis of what is National History Day, and then I believe we may have a performance.
Evening, my name's Mike Yell, and I'm a 7th grade social studies teacher in the middle school. And this is Kiara Lebrun, one of my students, and Floyd Johnson. National History Day is a nationwide program that has been in operation for decades. And basically, it's not a day as such, it's a year-long activity. And the way I use it is in two ways. I have a history club with kids, but I also use it as what's called differentiation with some of my students. And basically, in National History Day, students pick a subject in history according to a theme. This year's theme was conflict and cooperation. And what they do is they create, they research it, they create, research primary sources, and they create some kind of project that is judged. Now, the projects vary, they're at the junior level, which is middle school, and in the high school level. Let me just tell you about the two that they have done, and then the one Casey did. Kiara Lebrun did an individual performance, which essentially means she researched a subject using as many primary sources as she could, and she created an acting scene around that subject. Floyd Johnson also picked a very unique project, his was called, "He Created a Website." And if you two just want to tell them, and then Kiara was going to give a little performance? Now, I'm not certain how we're going to do it, because, but I thought I might move them, if you can all see over there, and then I'll move the podium, and that way, anybody in the audience gets to see as well. So do you want to just tell them just a word about your project?
I, mine was about Galileo, and I just kind of based mine off of what, his conflict with the church, between science and religion.
Yeah, and mine was about the First Crusade, and it was about the conflict in between the Muslims and the Christians for Jerusalem. And the website took a really long time.
This is one of those things where, those of you who've been around a while, I brought in a couple kids a few years back, who actually went to the nationals with this. And I have high hopes for these kids, they've done just an incredible job. And it's one of those things they'd like to say, "Well, I'd like to claim some credit, but this is essentially getting out of kids' way, and letting them do their work, and what they can do." And they're just done incredible jobs. Kiara, why don't we head on up?
When was the last time you were arrested, because you thought differently than others? I'm Galileo, and I am a scientist. Now, before we get into my story, I just wish you to know just a little bit about me. I am a Italian cat for the Sancho Gallegos and Julia de Gueh Ammanac, on February 15, 1564. And one very important thing I think you should know about me, is that I am a good cat. I always went to church, and I always tried to live in a family. I'm also a astronomer and an inventor. I invented and built the furnace bulb, many times accomplished this, a water machine beam, and the one I am definitely the most famous for, the telescope. Now, one day when I was looking through my telescope, I came to the conclusion that the earth evolved on the sun. Well, obviously, this century, that comes in no surprise. But in my century, everybody thought that the sun was around the earth. Before I discovered this spell, a man named Copernicus figured this out. I wrote to my friend Kepler, "Like you, I attempted this experiment a few years ago, and discovered some events, the many natural, the causes of many natural effects, which are now less inexplicable by the current theory." Now, how would you feel if all of a sudden, somebody came up to you and said, "You're wrong, and I have proof." The last household use of the church spell. At first, when I told them, they thought I was crazy, they didn't care. But then, as I got more people on my side, and I taught my students this, the church started to feel more worrying. Then, one day, my friend Nidelene came to my house. A few weeks after that, I rose on trial. This trial was one of the biggest conflicts of my life. While on trial, the members of the church asked me a few questions. One of the questions they asked was, "Why bother with science? The Bible tells us everything we need to know." I told them, "I do not feel obliged that Saint God would be now the supreme center of intellect, because I'm tempted to forego there." Well, because the church still didn't believe me, they asked me to resolve my idea. Well, here's another concept, I'm hoping to use very powerful forces, on one hand, the church said, "They torture me until I resolve." But, and I definitely am wrong, when I'm 100% sure that I'm right? So I told them, "A set, a plausible force." I told them, "Do you have something that can help me survive?" Well, when I didn't resolve my ideas, the church pulled me in to help me. I was afraid that my beautiful telescope would never see the light of day. I told my friends, "I..." One day, on October 11, 1632, an institute shows up to my house. I told them, "I first time I devoted to my studies, and I strove and hoped, someday move away somewhat from the beaten path. I regret, having given the world the fortune of my own grace. I feel inclined to sign with the glass, to the inscrutable place and basement of my life. I was completely fine while in health rest. I died on January 8, 1642." The happy ending to my story is that, in 1992, the cult and the church formally admitted that my beauty of the soul was immortal. So, although I died trying to prove my point, it all ended in...
Thank you.
Karen Floyd, can I just meet you right here? I have your actual certificates from the National History Day.
Thank you, students, and thank you, Mr. Yell. We'll move on to board member recognition, I think Mary's going to start us off.
I am. I have the honor this evening to start the conversation, and thank you, to two of our board members who will be leaving the board, and this is their last regular meeting of the board. And, you know, I've, watching some of these students, I think, I hope we have some future school board members in the audience, and hopefully, you'll be able to learn a little bit about these two people, and think to the future for yourself. First of all, I'd like to start with Erica Sherrier. And Erica has been on the board about eight months. She volunteered to fill a vacancy on the board, and she really wanted to represent parents, particularly parents of elementary students, and she has both elementary and middle school children, so that they became more aware of what was happening in the district, and has continued to advocate for their involvement in the school district and in their schools. And I've really admired how she's a parent of elementary students and middle school students, and juggling home and job and the board responsibilities, because the time commitment for board members is very significant. She's come onto the board during a very challenging and exciting time for those last eight months. We have, I'll talk about a few of the highlights of that time that Erica has been part of, that are important to the district. Certainly, we're building a new elementary school, and Erica has served on the Facilities and Grounds Committee during this time period, so being very involved in that. A number of the changes that have occurred, certainly, new attendance boundaries, and staff reassignment and transfer, we have a new teacher contract, we've started new partnerships during this time period. And also, looking to the future. So it's not just about buildings and mortar, but it's what goes on in those buildings in the future. And looking to the board's vision and direction through HSD 2025, that the board will take action on next meeting, and so that's a very significant accomplishment that has been achieved during this time period. We've spoken recently, even today, about how much she's learned through this period of time, and I just know that she's going to continue in this role of being advocate for the school district, supporting certainly the work that this board does and the administration does, and also advocating for parents to continue to be more involved in the district. And she's taken on a new role, as of last night, I believe. Yep, again, she's going to be the EP Rock Parent Group President. So, moving forward with new parents at EP Rock, and she's excited about that leadership and new energy that'll be part of that group with the new parents, as well as existing parents from EP Rock. So we really want to thank you for your time, your commitment, energy, and certainly service to our students, and to our staff, and to the district and our community. Thanks, Erica.
Thanks.
I also want to just thank Erica as well, you know, coming on board in midstream like that, and just sort of jumping in and learning the ropes as quickly as you did, I think, was certainly something that was welcome, and we certainly appreciate it. I really didn't know Erica very well when she first came on the board, so I asked around to, I think, Principal Amy Hamburg and some others, and, you know, they gave you high marks for your energy and your enthusiasm and your involvement in the schools, and that was key for you to come on the board and adapt very well, so thank you.
I still don't know how to do the mics. No, I, thanks. I, I don't know, I'm always at a loss for words when I get the microphone, but I just, I do, I appreciate you actually taking, allowing me to be on the board and to fill the vacancy. I have learned a lot, the district is very complex. I just don't think the general public understands how difficult it is. It's like managing a Fortune 500 company with board members that aren't talking to each other, except at the meeting, so that's a very interesting thing. But anyway, I just, I appreciate the opportunity, I have learned a lot in my eight months. I felt we have a very dynamic board, and you all are committed to education, and I appreciate you inviting me in and welcoming me in, and answering any questions that I had, and the administration was very helpful too, so, and congratulations to Dan, and Lynn, and Barbara, they're all going to do a great job, so, thanks, and I will see you around out in the crowd.
Just for those in the audience who may not know exactly what Erica was talking about, about board members not talking to each other, it isn't because they're mad at each other, it's because of the laws in Wisconsin that restrict that kind of conversation when it's about board business or the district business. And so, it is very difficult when you think of the level of responsibilities that board members have, and that's something Erica's found out, that their work has to be done here and at the committee meetings, meetings that we post. And that is very difficult to do during short periods of time, that we meet for two and a half hours, or whatever that meeting length is. So, thanks Erica, so much. Moving on to Dick Minnick. And Dick, well, it's hard to talk for a few minutes about the six years that you have been on the board. Certainly, you have been a strong advocate for students, for staff, for the district, and for this community, in everything that you have done since you've been here. Dick was elected to the board, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I missed something here, in April 2002, so six years on the board, currently serving as vice president, and has served two years as vice president. He has also served through those six years, so we jumped right into this, as the Facilities and Grounds chairperson during a significant time in the district of growth and facility modification, addition, and so forth. And a few of those projects, certainly Hudson Prairie Elementary School, the remodeling of that school coming in 2002. And then Willow River as well, extensive remodeling, beautiful, absolutely beautiful restored building, with an addition in 2002, 2003. So his chairing the Facilities and Grounds Committee immediately, he jumped right in and started to take on these big projects, and certainly, on the board and with the administration, he's known for his vision about our facilities, his level of quality has always been high, wanting to represent this community in a very, in the very best way. And so, he also co-chared the Facilities Task Force, that's one thing about Dick, he's courageous and enthusiastic and energetic, and always, again, advocating for the district and for our students. Let's see, facilities, he also is responsible for Newton Field Improvements. And a couple of those things are certainly the new sustainable lights that we have on that field, sound system, the track itself, and there's probably a lot of things that I'm forgetting, but that's some of the highlights, and maybe you'll add some more in a few minutes. The middle school athletic complex, now that we have a varsity soccer field there, certainly a track that can be used by our community, and is used by the middle school for their FIAE programs as well, great addition to support our students and to support our community in keeping fit. And then, last certainly but not least, is Rivercrest. And Dick's vision for that building, that building will be a testament to Dick's vision for facilities in the Hudson School District for significant years to come. Certainly, I think of Dick as an idea person. In fact, I oftentimes, during the last six years, have had numerous contacts with Dick about having another idea, and another idea, and actually, the last Facilities and Grounds Committee, he had another idea. And we are now connecting that idea with something else we wanted to do, but it fit perfectly, and I called him today and said, "You know that idea you had? Well, it fits in this way, and now we'll bring that to fruition in another way in Rivercrest." So he is the idea man, he has a big heart, he's a problem solver, and I think one thing we all appreciate is your sense of humor. So thank you for all your years, commitment, energy, enthusiasm... So thank you for all your years' commitment, energy, enthusiasm and work on the board to support our students, staff and this community.
Thank you, Mary. And I think you captured most of what all of us board members feel towards Dick. One of the things I tried to do just a few minutes ago is think what makes up a good board member. And the words that came to mind were wisdom, integrity, intelligence, civilness, thoughtfulness, visionary, detailed and hardworking. And Dick, you capture every one of those qualities. So we're going to miss you and thank you a great deal.
I did forget one thing that you're very proud of and I would be remiss not to say this, and that's the orchestra program. And we are going to have a report on the orchestra program. We tried very hard to have students here to play a tribute to you, but unfortunately, I didn't think of it soon enough to get it pulled together, sorry. But Sandy worked on it very hard in the last few days trying to get that to be accomplished. But if we could, envision, Dick. You're good at envisioning. So envision, right there, and we could all hum? Well, maybe not. But our orchestra program certainly is a wonderful benefit to our students. It's one of the many contributions you've been part of.
Well, thank you for your kind words. I hardly recognized who you were talking about. But I just made some quick notes and I'm going to be very brief, but it's been a lot of fun. And, you know, at the end of the day, it is about people and I've had the delight and pleasure of working with some wonderful people, people I never would have met if I hadn't been on the board. And that goes right across to the members of the board currently, been a delight to work with. I also put down, one of the highlights was to bring the orchestra program onboard. And, you know, I probably sent a mixed message of feeling good about the facilities and some of the athletic field upgrades, but the highlight quite frankly was getting the orchestra program and working with this board to bring it onboard. Probably the disappointment that I'll leave with the board is we didn't really bring a good secondary solution to the, to the community. And that's going to be an issue that this community is going to have to struggle with and resolve. When I first came on the board, we had about 41 or 4200 students and we talked about the day will soon be coming, that we'll have 5,000 or 5,200 kids. And I think a lot of people thought that was not going to happen. Well, it did happen and the next challenge is going to be to start planning for this district for 6,000 plus students. And I am convinced we'll have a little bit of moderation, but, you know, we, as a district and community, need to be thinking out 10, 15, 20 years. The growth will come. We will be in excess of 6,000 students and I've always felt we'll probably cap out 7,000 students at some point in time. So real quickly, it's just been a lot of fun. I've met some wonderful people. It's been a real positive experience and couldn't be happier and thank you. It's been very humbling experience to serve on the board. Thank you.
Okay. We're ready to move on to, let's see, correspondence. Cindy, do we have any correspondence?
We do. We have two thank yous, both for plans. One from Kathy Fagarnas, who's an educational assistant at our middle school, and she received a plan from us for, on the death of her mother. Also Bob Norvold, who delivers the inter-school mail, the death of his sister, he received a plant from us and is thanking us for that.
Thanks Cindy. We'll move on to Superintendent's Report, Mary.
I'll start with the results of the April 1 election. We've heard a little bit about that this evening already. The winners in that election, remember that we were seating three board members. Dan Chernohoy was elected to a three-year term with 2,388 votes. Lynn Robson was elected to a three-year term with 2,319 votes. And Barbara Van Lunen, who's in the audience, I see Barb over there and Lynn's right behind her. Barb was elected to a one-year term and received 2,138 votes. And certainly, we thank all of the individuals in our community who took the time to vote and expressed their preferences for school board members. We certainly think that this is a very important, a role for community members to give their time and certainly Dan's given significant time over the years. Oh, I'm not supposed to say that? Okay. And we really look forward to having Barb and Lynn join the board. Next, I'm going to talk just a little bit about Rivercrest Sustainability Highlights. I felt that before that building actually opens, it would be good to highlight a few of the sustainability elements that are in that building. And so each board meeting until the opening of Rivercrest, and then I'll probably be saying it again, I'm just going to highlight a few of the differences between traditional construction and construction of Rivercrest, which will certainly support our environment and will also reduce our operating costs. And so the two things I'm going to talk about today are recycled materials and recycling of construction waste and then where the materials come from. So as far as using recycled materials, we estimate right now, and this may have changed over time because we've still continued to make decisions, but at least 20% of the building will be made up of recycled materials. And then construction waste is taken care of differently in a sustainable project. 75% or more of the waste is recycled. So oftentimes, you know, you see the big dumpsters at construction sites and that's not the case at Rivercrest. Certainly, we do have dumpsters, but they are not filled and emptied and filled again and emptied in the same kind of pace that traditional construction. Instead, that waste is oftentimes reused. It's oftentimes given out to the contractors who are on site and they're allowed to use that waste. I have driven by and I know many of you have and you may have seen particularly on Cooley Trail at the entrance, a sign that says, feel free to take anything that happens to be there. So there may be scrap lumber there and those have, people in our community have had a use for that and been able to reuse those elements that came from the building. So 75% of the construction waste will be reused and I think that that's a testament to that building and what we're trying to accomplish. As far, excuse me, as the local materials, more than half of the materials have been manufactured within 500 miles of the construction site. And certainly that reduces fuel consumption, pollution, carbon emissions associated with transporting those items. So local is better or regional in this case. And certainly, we have both local products being used and regional products being used throughout the school. And it supports our regional economy as well, so it has an added benefit right there. And next week or next month, I'll be talking about the indoor air quality and the differences between traditional construction and sustainable construction and what that, what's the impact on air quality. And lastly, I'm going to talk about the gateway. We have, we have on our agenda later on, we'll be taking, or the board will be taking action on bids for the Rivercrest, the work under Highway F. We've called that the underpass up to this point and the board has committed to that link that connects the Rivercrest site and the partnership we have with Camp St. Croix. And this underpass has a new name and we're going to now refer to it, so everybody's going to work on that the rest of the meeting, and I continue to work on it as well, as the gateway. Because the gateway really speaks to us about what we're, what that link is. It's a connection between the two campuses and it provides for the partnership that we have with the Y to develop and to support our students at Rivercrest, to support activities with our students throughout the district and to support community events. Again, I've talked about races or events that we use both sites. It gives us access to additional environmental ecosystems, certainly to the St. Croix River, which is a national scenic riverway that our students will be able to study and to learn about. And this link is an important one for the future of the district. It certainly speaks to partnership and it is a gateway to the future for the district.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Any questions regarding Mary's report? If not, we'll move on to reports. The high school choir trip to Costa Rica.
Thank you.
Sandy?
At the start of the school year, the school board approved our very first international choir trip and we are pleased to bring you tonight. We have our both choir directors here, Andy Hayes and Kerry Heisler, along with some students. And they're going to share some of the highlights of their trip, which I hear was pretty exciting, especially the singing in the Basilica I heard was quite a moving experience. So Andy, you're going to begin?
Definitely.
Okay.
Well, good evening. Excuse me. Yes, our first trip, international trip from the high school to Costa Rica was a huge success. For eight days, members of the Chantus Choir and the Chamber Choir performed at five major cities throughout Costa Rica. They included the capital, San Jose, La Fortuna, Monteverde, Jaco and Cartago. During these eight days, we had five actual performance venues, which included, if we go to the next slide here. This is our first one. This is at the European School in San Jose. It was an outdoor performance. We performed for the entire school, grades K through 12. It was an outdoor performance until the rain moved in. At that time, then we went inside and had a question and answer time between our students and the students at the school. We talked about different coursework that they study. We also talked about the fact that they don't have music at the school. If they want to participate in music, they do that privately outside of the school system. So this was quite, quite an event for them to see an organized choir perform. Let's go to the next slide. Just some of the students at the European School. This is the Basilica de Los Angeles. This was our first formal performance and this is in Cartago, just outside of San Jose, the capital. A beautiful semi-Gothic cathedral, very ornate on the inside. Pictures didn't turn out the inside, obviously. It was a wonderful performance. Here's all the kids after our performance. We probably had about 20 people that attended that performance. There was one gentleman that after every song, he stood up and gave us a standing ovation. And we also sang a Costa Rican folk song and it was Congori Shango. And the gentleman actually knows the arranger of that song. And so I'm in contact with this gentleman who he's going to send us some more music from Costa Rica. This is my first PowerPoint presentation, by the way. This was the view of the volcano just outside of La Fortuna. This was our third performance and this performance was at the Quirro Hotel, which we performed for both American and German tourists. Now imagine this wonderful five-star hotel, they're actually eating while we're singing, these huge pane windows and just outside is this volcano. And, you know, very safe. It erupts, but just a beautiful sight. This was our next performance in La Fortuna at the Catholic Church. In Costa Rica and of course in many Central American countries, the focal point of these communities, of course, is the church. So these performances were at the Catholic Church. We performed as a part of the worship service and then following the worship service, we performed some of our secular music for them. This was the priest, very happy with our performance. I think we were talking about the folk song that we just performed. I won't discuss what he said. This was our final performance in Monteverde. This is Chantus singing, having a little fun with Osifuni Mungu, African piece. And the next slide, again, Chamber Choir performing there. The people were very receptive to the performances, very moved, even though they had difficulty understanding, of course, some of the English languages that we performed in, English, Latin, Spanish, African, German. They were very appreciative and presented us with a standing ovation. A couple of our students at Emmanuel Antonio National Park, I believe Gretchen's looking at a sloth in the tree. And then this is another place that we visited, which was a local coffee plantation. It was quite the hike down, about two miles straight downhill and then of course back uphill was less enjoyable. Anyways, those are some pictures from our trip and we brought some students, Monica Deloy, Stephen Dolly and Sarah Hoxford, who would like to maybe talk about some of their experiences, whether that be some of the traveling or the performances.
All right. Well, I particularly liked when we would sing our Congori Shango, the traditional piece from Costa Rica, because I would see people jump around and laugh and sing with us. And we sang an ad lib performance on a beach and everyone was stepping and clapping and understanding what we were saying and I thought it was a cool connection between our cultures. Also, we had, not only did we have like amazing performances, but an amazing tour guide. We were informed of their culture throughout our trip. On the bus rides, Ronald would point out like facts and tell us anything. We were wondering why this tree was orange and he told us the origin of the orange bark and how it was made and it was unique. I also liked singing for, our first performance for that school, I forget what it's called, the European School. It was quite unique to me because we would talk to them and ask them about their music preferences and they didn't really know much, they hadn't experienced much. A lot of them said they were into guitar and played a little bit of piano, but they hadn't had much experience with choir. Lastly, I just thought the trip was overall very relaxing and positive and I felt that our program grew as a choir by going on this trip and really just understanding different cultures. And it really helps me respect what we have here and I'm very thankful for our program here.
Okay. My name is Stephen Dolly and I'm a junior and I thought the Costa Rica tour was one of the best experiences of my life by far. Well, yeah, I pretty much got sunburned everywhere, but that's, that's not the point. I really enjoyed performing at all those different venues. Even no matter how small the audience was, you could definitely tell that you connected with them and created some musical moments for them. Just from going down there, you can tell that music, ugh, music isn't a huge part of their program down there. And just like Monica and Mr. Hayes had said at the European School, they don't have a music program there. And to share some of what we learned with them hopefully has inspired them to pursue music even further because it's such a gift and blessing to really have. And our guides, like Monica had touched on, they just knew so much about the country. Like it was, it was just unbelievable. They told me some of the strangest things and, like, and then our bus drivers, they were just as remarkable as our guides were. They knew as much as the guides. And I remember we were crossing this one bridge and our bus driver, he turned on the radio and we were saying, hi May, why are you turning on the radio? And he said, no, 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 just listen, just listen. And he had called in a shout out and this person was talking Spanish and all of a sudden they went Hudson High School from Wisconsin, United States. And we're like, wow, that's really cool. But we saw so many different sights, like the waterfall, that was just incredible and did some zip lining through the National Cloud Forest, which is an awesome experience. And you got to see a lot of the wildlife down there too. Up here, we have squirrels and down there, they have iguanas, which was, they were everywhere. But, and you just, you got to see all the different types of architecture that they have down there. They don't really have walls. It's like, because it's so open and you really got to see how, it's like a completely different side of the world and how differently everyone else lives. But yeah, we were all able to connect through the music that we brought down to Costa Rica. So I really enjoyed the tour.
Hi, I'm Sarah Hoxford. I'm a senior and I'm in both Chamber Choir and Chantus Choir. I really enjoyed the trip, as I think everyone did. And the performances were really cool. A couple other people have talked about this, but the people were so appreciative of our music. I mean, at Hudson, like you get an amazing choir concert four times a year, but there it's like a once in a lifetime thing. Like Mr. Hayes was talking about the gentleman who gave us a standing ovation at every, every single song. I really enjoyed the trip, as I think everyone did. And the performances were really cool. A couple other people have talked about this, but the people were so appreciative of our music. I mean, at Hudson, you get an amazing choir concert four times a year, but there, it's like a once-in-a-lifetime thing, like Mr. Hayes was talking about, the gentleman who gave us a standing ovation at every single song. And there are other ladies that came up and were like, "I've been, you know, had this revelation, it was so amazing," and like, it was like nothing they'd ever heard before, because even the choirs that they do have, like, don't sing the same types of European music that we do a lot of. I don't know, it was just really cool that they were so appreciative, and they'd come up to us and shake all of our hands and just talk to us in Spanish, like, a lot. And we were just like, "Gracias, gracias, pruebe vida, goodbye." We didn't really know what to say, but they were just so overwhelmed with our music. It was really, really incredible. And we all learned a little bit of Spanish. It was pretty bad, but it was fun, like, trying to communicate with people. And talking to the kids at the school was really interesting, and just seeing the differences. Like, most of them spoke, like, two or three or four, the one kid was, like, seven languages. And they're like, "How many of us speak two languages?" I think there was, like, two people that spoke more than one language. So just seeing the differences in the schools. And then I think it really helped us to bond as a choir, like, getting to know other students, like, with the zip lining and the swimming at the waterfall and the hiking and the more, like, touristy things. At first, I was like, "Oh, great, we're going and doing all these tourist things." But then, like, I'd get to know students that I didn't get to see all the time, and like, kids I didn't hang out with at school. They were like my Costa Rica buddies, and it was just really neat. And I think it just helped us to grow, not only musically, but also just as a choir family. And then we saw some things that, like, you'll probably never see again, like, we saw this volcano, the one in the picture, and it was, like, erupting, sort of, this one night. Like, it's not like explosion erupting, but it oozes down and it's all glowy. Like, I'm never gonna see a volcano erupt again, probably, I hope. But it was, like, there's so many different things that, like, we'll never have the opportunity to see again that we got to do because we got to go on this trip. Thank you.
What a great experience. Thanks for those reports and...
I just want to add one thing. I just, in talking with the priests or the people that we sang with afterwards, and they would come up to us and say things to us, I just, one of the things that stuck with me was one of the priests, and of course, this is all translated through our guides, but he said, "So many people come here on spring break, and they come and they visit us, and they just, they party, or they, you know, see all of our stuff, and then they leave." He said, "But you came and you brought us something, and we appreciate it, and we wish we could give you something in return."
Neat. Great, thank you. I'm glad it was a success. Thanks again. Okay, we'll stay on the music thing. Orchestra updates, Sandy?
All right. Lots of exciting updates here this evening. We have with us tonight Britt Severson, one of our orchestra teachers. Jack Young is our other instructor, and Jack is actually in an orchestra rehearsal at this moment in Eau Claire, so...
Yes.
He helped he and Britt together put together the update. We do have registrations going on yet the next week, so our kind of projections and numbers for the initial fourth graders are just that, predictions at this time, but we'll give you the best information we can. And we just thank the board for going forward with the orchestra. I kind of was fortunate in that I didn't have to do the legwork my first year. That's when we started, so away we went. We had Jack to start out with fourth and fifth. Then we added Britt half-time, and we rolled it up to sixth, and now she's full-time. So we have two full-time instructors as it rolls up to seventh. And then, obviously, now next year, you'll see in the presentation, we'll be adding, hopefully, a .5 again as we roll up to eighth grade. So it's just one of those progressions. And our big plans now are when it rolls to the high school the following year, because that'll be a new piece right there. So, Britt, thank you so much.
Like Sandy said, I'm Britt Severson. I teach at all five elementary schools here in Hudson, so I'm running around a lot. And one of the pictures on the left is of the fifth-grade orchestra students. We're missing a few there, but that's from EP Rock, and we have, that was from one of our after-school orchestra lessons. And then on the right, we actually, Jack has done most of the work at the middle school, starting a parent group this year and planning a lot of activities. We actually just went and saw the string group barrage, this kind of like a rock fiddling kind of, they dance and they play violin. It's very exciting. And we took a lot of the middle schoolers to Situpal Falls, and that was last weekend. And then they also had a sledding party at Badlands this past winter. And the elementary program, we see the students twice in a six-day cycle, twice a week. The program is voluntary. Students sign up at the end of third grade, and some sign up in the fall if they're new students or missed the boat in the spring. They have a small group lesson, once in a six-day cycle. They're pulled out of either general music or recess time, and it's usually a group of six or less students. Sometimes it gets to be a little bit more, depending on the scheduling. And we try to split up the students based on the instrument they play, violins and violas in one group, cellos and basses in another, as much as we can. And then the students also have a large group lesson that meets either before or after school. This year, we had fourth graders meeting at eight o'clock before school and fifth graders meeting at 3:30 after school. And the middle school program, I obviously don't have a lot of experience with, that's kind of Jack's part of the program, but they have a large ensemble that meets with, like, all the sixth-grade students, they'll meet every other day, and they also get a 15-minute private lesson once every six days, and that's with Jack. Currently, we're, at the middle school, we have sixth and seventh-grade orchestras. And then next year, as the students move on, we will have an eighth-grade orchestra. Last year, it was the second year of the orchestra program. I was a half-time teacher at three of the, whoa, three of the elementary schools, and Jack was doing two of the elementary schools and the middle school. And I don't remember what else was on that slide. Okay, there we go. So we were one, 1.5, four time. And we had two elementary concerts every year, one in January here at the high school, and then we have one in May with the St. Croix Valley Symphony out of River Falls, and that's actually coming up May 5th. You're all invited to attend. It's at Hudson Prairie. This year, we have students in fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh grades, and now that I'm up to full-time, we have a two-point program. The instruments that are offered in fourth grade, students can play violin or viola. When those students get to fifth grade, they can switch to cello or bass if they like or stay on their current instrument. And this year, we actually had to split the January concert into two dates because we had too many students to fit on the stage, so we had two different nights, which was very, very fun. The sixth grade has three concerts a year, and the seventh grade has four concerts. And this is kind of a middle school piece of the music puzzle here. There's WSMA Soul and Ensemble Festival. This was the first year that orchestra students from Hudson participated in that. There were 10 to 20 eligible students, and almost all received a one score, which is the top score, one out of five, which is very cool. And then there's also a large group clinic, which is part of the WSMA piece. The seventh-grade band and orchestra went to Stillwater, actually, it was here, Stillwater came here, and they worked with Manny Loriano, who is principal trumpet player from Minnesota Orchestra, and he's completely wonderful. And here are some pictures of him working with some of the students, and you'll see Floyd up in the right-hand corner, who was here earlier tonight. And the kids absolutely loved him. He's wonderful as far as working with students. Next year, just kind of a picture of our space, we have eighth-grade orchestra, and they will rehearse in the band room opposite band days. Sixth and seventh-grade orchestra rehearses in the cafeteria on the end near the pool, where the windows overlook the pool. Fourth-grade students this year actually can, or, well, next year, can start on violin, viola, cello, and bass, so they don't have to make that switch in fifth grade. They can just start on the lower instruments, which pedagogy-wise makes a lot of sense. And now that we have a little bit more space next year, it will help. And fifth-grade students, students who are currently in fourth grade, can also choose to switch to cello or bass next year. And I think one of the space pieces was, we don't really know space yet, obviously, and this year, it's kind of wherever we can get it. Some principals are nice enough to let me use their office every once in a while to teach, and even. So currently, numbers-wise, we're growing at a pretty good pace. We've got currently 91 fourth graders, and then you can kind of see just natural progression of any activity, really. You know, it starts out with a big number, and as students kind of decide if it's their thing or not, it tends to fall off a little bit. But next year's enrollment, we've got our middle school enrollment nailed down, like Sandy mentioned. Our third-grade students, our current third graders, are signing up for orchestra on Thursday, so we're getting ready for that. And fourth-grade students are kind of in the process of deciding if they're going to do orchestra next year in fifth grade. So it's kind of hard to give you an idea as far as numbers, but it's been pretty steady. We start with about 120 at the beginning of the year, and it kind of falls along to about 90 as the year goes on. And right now, we've got over 100 families who are planning on coming to the meeting or are requesting more information about the orchestra program. And more on next year, we'll have eighth grade. 2009, 2010 will be the first year we'll have orchestra at the high school level, and obviously, Jack's a little bit more of a part of that planning. And the new school, which we're very excited about, has an orchestra room, which is wonderful, and provides a second office for me, because I haven't really had an office. My car kind of doubles as that. Additional staffing, we just interviewed a lot of wonderful candidates for the .5 position that will help Jack out at the middle school and help myself at the elementary school level. We interviewed a lot of great candidates that were mostly cello or bass players. Jack and I are both violinists. We're trying to just balance out our staff. And coming up events, we have a concert on May 5th, like I said before, at Hudson Prairie. It's all the orchestra students in the entire district, so it's a pretty big concert. And St. Croix Valley Symphony's again joining us, and they play with the kids, and it's a wonderful experience. They get to see, you know, violinists who have been playing more than three years, so it's pretty exciting. And there's a seventh-grade orchestra and band concert here at the high school on May 22nd. June 3rd is the sixth-grade orchestra and band concert. And then in August, we have our annual summer stringfling. It's a week-long afternoon orchestra camp, just kind of jump-start kids for the school year. And a huge thank you to all of you for all the support you've given us. It means a lot. The state of orchestra programs around the state isn't the greatest, so it's great to be a part of a program that's growing and has a lot of community support. It really means a lot. Educational foundation for all their help, Dr. Chris Chernoy and the St. Croix Valley Symphony, they help us out a lot. Administrators, like I said, for everything, including lending me their office space, and parents and community members for all their support as well. So, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Britt. Very good report. Any questions for Britt and the orchestra program?
I talk really fast.
I just want to compliment Britt and certainly Jack before her at the elementary level. We have added this program without having space for the program. And as Britt talked about, we will have one school that will actually have a dedicated room for the program. So her flexibility, and again, Jack's before that, to move this program forward and to support our kids and their learning has been very significant. Adapting to whatever space that day they can make for them. I know our principals have worked really hard, office staffs have been affected, teachers have been affected as well, and certainly, everyone's been behind this program to make sure it happens, even if we don't have space for it.
Yeah. Thanks again.
Great, thanks, Britt.
Thanks, Britt.
Okay, we'll move on to the new teacher induction program. Peg?
Good evening. A year ago, I came to you and talked to you about some of the research that we had used in developing a new teacher induction program. And there are really solid research-based reasons why we have programs to support our beginning teachers. Tonight, when I'm talking to you about the work that we've done, it's first and second year teachers who are brand-new to the profession, newly licensed in the state of Wisconsin. So although I'm going to be focusing and talking about the practices that we've worked with our 14 beginning, or, excuse me, 16 beginning teachers, it is, we have had more teachers, but about half of the teachers we hired are a little more than that, were experienced teachers. These are brand-new teachers out of college and first-time or second-year practicing, and they're here with us in Hudson. So it pays to invest in them, and this research model is really based out of the University of Santa Cruz in California. And the significant difference between this program is the fact that it focuses on the teacher's practice versus being a buddy system. The program that we had prior was really a buddy system. Periodically, we may have a mentor that would work with a beginning teacher on practice, but generally, it was, "How do I do my lesson plan? How do I..." How do we go? Are we okay? And that, we've really shifted this year, and I've got actually some baseline data to talk to you about. And a couple of the other areas besides moving from a buddy system to a partnership that promotes improved teaching practice and improved student learning is also just the consistency in equality of mentoring. At one point, we had mentors that, you know, we would have mentors that would spend a lot of time with their beginning teachers, and then we would have mentors that really might see them two or three times a year. And so we really increased our expectations and our support of our mentors. Finally, it's really an opportunity to give back to the profession. I've had a lot of opportunity this year in speaking with our mentor teachers, and I'll kind of give you the profile on them. We've had anywhere from five to well over 30 years of teaching experience from our mentor teachers. They've talked to me how they've learned from the initial educator. I know this year from coaching a school manager, when you're forced to sort of talk about the reasons that you do certain things, when you're forced to discuss, really get into the nitty-gritty of practice, it really makes you learn as well, and that's certainly what's happened with our teachers. Now, the body of research that we've used is, like I said, it's from Santa Cruz, and that's the next slide, Sandy. It's from Smith and Ingersoll, and this was the compelling reason why we needed to improve our teacher induction program. By the end of five years, 46% of teachers have left the profession, and this is national research. A buddy system approach to assisting new teachers still results in a 39% loss of new teachers. So even with having a buddy and investing in a buddy with both time, energy, and resources, you still get a loss of 39% of new teachers. And participation, this is an interesting result as well, that participation in just, you know, going to a class or going to a seminar really didn't have much improvement at all in reducing the risk of teachers leaving the profession. The absolute solid practice that improves teacher performance is having common planning time with teachers in the classroom, talking about students and talking about practice. So that's what we've based our mentoring program on. We, again, just the real quick results of their study, they tracked for six years teachers that graduated in '92 and '93, and they were tracked for six years. When there was a full-release mentor program, there were 95% still in education, 88% were still in the classroom. And although Hudson doesn't have a lot of teacher turnover, this is where this bottom percentage is what we're aiming for. We want to create teacher leaders, because it's teacher leaders that make things happen within their building and within our district. So let me give you the profile on Hudson this year. We had 16 initial educators. These were newly licensed in the state of Wisconsin, first-year teachers. We had 14 mentors, and they were all at all levels. We had four newly retired teachers, which was kind of exciting. These were teachers that just retired last year and actually came back and worked with their initial educator on a regular basis. We really invested with high support with our mentors. We gave them 20 hours of training, which was required for them to become a mentor. It was a selection, they had to apply. It was our desire, the principals' desire, to choose the very finest teachers to mentor our beginning teachers. An additional 15 hours of training was offered to our mentors as well. So... So by the time they're done, they're going to have had thirty-five hours of training, which is really significant. And all of that training focuses on how you have conversations with teachers about their practice. So I wanted to give you some, go ahead, some of the reports from our survey that we took. We now have a baseline that we can use. And at first glance, I was like, ooh, you know, we've got fifty percent reported that the relationship creates professional growth for the initial educator. I would suspect that last year, we probably maybe had five percent. And so we now have a baseline that we can utilize to continue to improve our practice. So what I'm saying to you with that fifty percent is fifty percent of our initial educators said that because of my relationship with my mentor, I received professional growth that helped me with my practice. Forty-five percent reported that the mentoring focus was on instructional practice and on student learning results. And I'm going to be sharing a partnership in a few minutes that really hones in on the partnership between mentor and initial educator that really did focus on student learning results. Seventy percent reported that my mentor meets with me on a regular basis and engages with me in in-depth conversation about teaching practice, which is really significant. I remember we went from the buddy system, where we were talking about how do you make copies? How do you send down for duplicating? How do you get into the school on the weekend, to people talking about practice, talking about student learning results. I'm really proud of this group of mentors this year. They, they were very, very fine teachers and professionals. We did have some comments from initial educators, just talking about what a great program it was, made a huge difference in getting their confidence off to a good start. I liked this one. She was always willing to listen, lend advice, and discuss. Her phone was always on. She was an awesome mentor. I was immediately comfortable talking to her about any issues I was having and was comfortable getting feedback from her. Now think about, if you think about that, these are brand-new teachers who are letting a veteran teacher come in and watch them teach and give feedback on their teaching. And the other part on that that I liked is she said, "I feel strongly that this is a path to excellence in teaching." And that's a comment from our, from the mentor. So now, I want to show you a little bit here. We've got some excerpts from a first-year teacher portfolio, and this is where I was talking about, this was a very, very successful partnership and one that we're striving for all of our mentors in the future. What this partnership, and I'm bragging about one of Mr. Lucas's retired mentor, or retired teachers who's now a mentor, and one of his first-year teachers. And they worked together, mentors would work on things. It could be on a mentor coming in, observing a lesson, and giving feedback on gender participation. Or it could be a mentor observing, planning a lesson, observing and giving feedback on how many students asked, or how many high-level questions that particular lesson, the teacher asked in that particular lesson. In this particular case, this teacher, this veteran teacher worked with the initial educator on a particular student. So they worked one-on-one on planning a lesson, on, she observed a period, a couple of times, and monitored the results. And wait till you see these exciting results. So if, you go back, Sandy, for a sec. It said, this is from her portfolio where she was writing her reflection. This is from the first-year teacher. "The student was shutting down eighty percent of the time in the regular education classroom and failed to turn in assignments or turned in incomplete assignments. He was failing the class and refused to participate in classroom activities." So if you were to walk in and observe a mentor and a initial educator, you're going to see something like this. You're going to see teachers poring over, could be a lesson, it could be feedback, but this is the kind of partnership between a veteran teacher and an initial educator. All right? Then what would happen is you would see the initial educator, excuse me, the mentor observing, taking notes, similar to what a teacher would do or a coach would do, but giving specific feedback on whatever it is that they planned to get feedback on. And then reflecting on that together fairly soon after the lesson. In this particular case that I talked to you about, go ahead. What this teacher did is they, the teacher and the initial, the veteran teacher and the initial educator, is they looked at a particular lesson plan, they came up with a format on how they could engage in a relevant topic centered around the student's life. In this particular one, they decided to study the law and how the law would actually apply to this student. So this is just kind of, this is the letter that they wrote to Senator Cole. Go ahead. And this is the rubric. The, the mentor actually helped this teacher develop a rubric for the assignment. This is the test. And here are the results, which is really exciting. "The student participated ninety-seven percent of the time. His grade went from an F to a B-plus. He was enthusiastic, engaged during class activities. He gained confidence in his ability to succeed in this class and to transfer that knowledge to his daily life. He registered to vote and participated in the primary election after the class ended." So that is, is one of our really exciting pieces where the partnership between a teacher who really knows practice and a beginning teacher who's willing to reflect and willing to grow, and that partnership pulls together for our students. So we now have a baseline, which is really exciting, that we can measure each year, and of course, wanting to increase the, you know, the percentages of mentors and initial educators engaged in conversation about student learning results. And some of our next, other next steps are, we actually are looking to use our mentors who really had a lot of success in helping them train, our new set of mentors. We'll have a new two thousand eight, two thousand nine class. And we also want to provide more time during the school years for actually our mentors to get together to share practice with each other, so going mentor to mentor. And finally, just, we want to develop a structure to help, have the principals be able to have, be more involved in kind of monitoring, having more input and monitoring the new teacher induction program. So I will entertain questions or comments.
Do we have any questions regarding the mentoring program? Sorry, we're quite bored tonight here.
Actually, I do have a question.
Sandy?
I really love this program, and I really think that this is a great first-year success. I'm wondering what the, what the downside was. Was there anything that you learned from your feedback that, that you can use to improve the program because it was negative feedback?
Sure. I, I would say that we didn't necessarily receive negative feedback. Probably the most successful mentor experiences were those where the teacher was actually paired up with someone at their grade level or someone, you know, in their same department. That, we probably had better success. So what the Staff Development Committee came up with as a brainstorm is we're going to try to, to be more proactive about getting teachers to apply. It's tricky because you get them to apply and you don't exactly know how many you're going to need until we actually get the staffing done, which often is August thirty-first, completely everyone hired because of last-minute resignations or such. You never know if you're going to need a mentor or not. So it's sort of getting people to kind of upfront, put themselves out there. "I'll be willing to be a mentor even if I don't get a partnership this year." But we're going to do a more active recruiting job in getting more mentors to apply so that we can hope to have that one-on-one department or grade-level matchup in the building that they're in.
Peg, are the retirees mentors, are they, because you didn't have enough of the, or they just stepped forward, or?
They, they stepped forward, and I, I think Dr. Rapun also sort of really, you know, when, when you retire, which I don't know this, obviously, but I've heard that you sort of need to transition. And it's really a great way for retirees to stay involved. We probably, and I believe the Staff Development Committee decided that we wouldn't have a retiree past two years. There's just so much that changes within the practice that, that would be a disadvantage probably to the initial educator, to have anyone beyond two years retired.
Okay. Thank you.
Dan, I just had a, I guess it's comment slash question for Peg. First of all, great presentation. Thank you. I think this is a very valuable program, and I think, you know, we'll be looking to see how the numbers hopefully will move up from year to year as we develop this. Now, this, this is kind of maybe a bit of an unfair question, but I'm just sort of curious. If you could identify an area, Peg, where, let's say, our university teacher education programs are kind of lacking, what in this, in this mentoring program has sort of come to the surface for you? You know, obviously, you know, our graduates have, you know, have an education major and presumably have been, you know, somewhat prepared by the university system and, but, you know, obviously, there's, there's a certain amount of on-the-job training that occurs in any, in any type of profession. So I understand that. But is there an area you think that maybe our colleges and universities maybe need to focus on a little bit more where?
I'm going to turn to my principal colleagues. Would anyone like to comment on that? I know what he's going to say. But go ahead.
We want you in living color, Dan, on TV, so. We want you in living color on TV.
Oh, right. Okay. Oh, yes.
From the back.
All right. From the back? All right. I think actually, Mark, the thing is almost so obvious that, that we kind of miss it from the beginning. And what colleges and universities and their preparation programs really can't provide is experience. They simply cannot anticipate some of the things that teachers run into on a day-to-day basis in their classrooms. And when you have a mentor program like this, you have somebody who stands with you shoulder to shoulder, stands next to you, and is able to guide you through situations that even in the best of sort of laboratory circumstances, student teaching and others, they're not realistic. They just aren't. And this will be a problem that will exist for as long as we continue this process of preparing teachers for, for this profession. But I, it almost sounds redundant to say, to say it that way, but what they provide is what the universities never could with regard to experience. That short-term window as a student-teacher doesn't really compare. When you walk in, and that is your classroom, those are your kids, these are your lessons, and you have the responsibility for all that, it's an entirely different dynamic. And a mentor, the way it has been created here and under Peg's tutelage, mentors have really provided positive support and a much, much closer look and examination of the real experience that's involved in the classroom.
Okay. Thanks, Dan.
I, I would also add, teaching for learning would be an area as well. So coming in with understanding how you, I still, the focus is still on teaching versus on student learning overall.
Dan, I just had a quick comment. Mr. Cole must have done a good job. I saw the other principals give him a thumbs up when he came back.
We'll move on to some additional reports. Mary's going to cover the next two items on space for learning short-term solution and then space for learning K-12 enrollment projections, building capacities. Mary?
Well, I'm not quite sure why Dan moved to the back of the auditorium because he's going to need to move to the front of the auditorium again, and he really is going to do the bulk of talking about the middle school and the short-term space for learning solution. As you know, the capacity of the middle school, we have, have exceeded. And we continue to struggle with space as we did at the elementary, and more students move into the middle school. And we need to accommodate those students while the board works on a long-term plan for space, both for our students in grade six through eight and our students in nine through twelve. And so what Dan's going to talk about is the plan that he has worked on with his staff and presented to the Facilities and Grounds Committee a couple times now. And again, this is a short-term plan while the board takes time to study long-term options. So Dan?
Short-term plan, three years is what we've tentatively laid out here, and in my thinking, three years isn't really much of a short-term. There are other professions where you don't get three years to, if you're an NFL coach, three years could be an eternity, not a short-term, short-term plan. Before I get specifically to the sheet you have, I think you have the sheet with you that I'm going to be walking through here. I just want to reiterate a couple of things. One is once again, to be able to state publicly that personally, professionally, and the people who work in the middle school, on behalf of all of us, we want to again say thank you to this community who, in their collective wisdom, what, fourteen or maybe fifteen years ago, had enough foresight to see that the best possible structure for educating adolescents in the middle grades was to create a building like the one that they built. It has, it is categorically the best way to educate kids of this age. The house concept, the middle school philosophy, kudos to whoever it was at that point in time who got that ball rolling, because it has stood the test of time. Obviously, we've tried to grow with the time, but it is by far and away, conceptually and philosophically, the best way to educate kids passing through these years in their lives. And on the heels of that, one of the reasons I'm here tonight is also to tell you that we are chipping away. We are causing, I think, a slight bit of erosion in our ability to deliver the philosophy and the concept due to the space constraints that, that we are currently facing. And it's one of those things that you don't really fully appreciate it until all of a sudden, it's sort of come unglued. And presently, we're in the process of, I think, causing a form of erosion of the concept just due to the, the physical space limitations that we have and the adjustments that we are making. And presently, we're doing everything we can. We've been working within the parameters that have been, you know, outlined, you know, by the board and, and the things that the community wants to see done, trying to maximize the space that we currently have. And we have been doing that. We have indeed been doing that. But we are in a pinch. We're experiencing a space crunch at, at the middle level. As you walk through the sheet that, that you have in your packets here, and I don't want to read everything in detail to you, but just to highlight, you know, a few things. One corresponds with what Mary was saying earlier. This is a short-term proposal here, a short-term proposal. And that doesn't belie the fact that we need a long-term solution to the issues that confront us. What it may look like, I do not know. I just know we need resolution at some point in the fairly near future. So to that end, I want to walk through this, you know, just a little bit. And as Mary said, I have presented this information and questions have been asked of me of the Facilities and Grounds Committee on a couple of different occasions. This year, and I'm going to start with the plan because this year is the first year of the plan that we've had, we did add some staff. We added teachers in science and social studies to respond to the large numbers of kids we had per classroom. That addition didn't come until after the first quarter of the school year had already passed. We tried to work with those numbers and found that we are, the numbers in our core classes in grade six and seven were just, just too large, and the board approved the addition of those two folks at the beginning of, or at the end of the first quarter of this year. The facility, and there's always an impact if additional staffing comes along, there's an impact on the physical space. Our solution to that, you've heard this phrase before, I know Ed has used this phrase a number of times. We have experienced the same thing. The phrase is "teacher on a cart." And that's exactly what has had to happen in this situation. We have added these two teachers. One teaches six- One teaches six classes of social studies in six different classrooms in the building. The other teaches science in six different science classrooms in the building. And they move from house to house area on a cart and as those spaces become available. The other problem that we have in association with that is every time one of those teachers teaches in another house, they're taking kids out of the concept. In other words, Raider Blue, many of you will be familiar, that's the name of one of our houses. We have a science class of students from Raider Blue, but they are in another part of the building taking their science class, which in effect begins to erode the concept that we believe in so deeply with regard to the core and keeping those kids in their house area. So those teachers are in six different classrooms during the course of the day. Science and social studies were impacted and we are rapidly reaching the saturation point with regard to room utilization. But we still have and we're going to continue to work as we can with classroom space that we can find. And as you, we'll see as we go through this process a little bit further, see how we intend to work with that. But that's basically 2007 and eight. And you can see with the budget impact, the staffing was already included in the operating budget for that particular year. Mary, did you want to chime in at all on each year or just want me to keep going here? Okay. 2008, these are plans that we tentatively have set for next year. And again, we need to reduce class size and even more importantly, we need to improve the safety conditions that we have in our, some of our exploratory classes. Now, again, the exploratory rotation is a fundamental part of the middle school philosophy that you're familiar with, the core classes, and then the experiential classes that kids go to every day. Those are classes where there is usually a lot of equipment. The tech ed class, for example, where we have a lot of power equipment. Right now, we're looking typically at sometimes four, maybe five kids at a particular power tool, you know, whether it's a, you know, a table saw or a sander or a bandsaw or drill press, that's a lot of kids surrounding, you know, that equipment. We need to reduce the numbers in those classes. Those are subject-specific classrooms, so we don't have the opportunity to just use general classroom space. We need the equipment that's in there for those particular subjects. Similar, you know, family and consumer, some of the art classes, they operate the same way. We refer to them as classroom-specific. They're designed for those particular subjects. And the numbers are creeping up there. They have crept what we believe to be beyond a point of safety for some of our students. And what we have asked for with regard to staffing, and I'll just very quickly, what we want to do is expand the rotation. And I'll explain that very quickly. Right now, we have five courses in the rotation. Now, as a kid, a youngster in school would take one of the exploratory classes for seven weeks and then the next seven weeks would rotate to the next and so on. By adding one additional rotation, we simply drop the numbers down because we have spread the numbers out over a larger base. And that's what we're trying to accomplish with our exploratory program. And both sixth and seventh grade will be impacted by that. And in doing that, we'll drop our numbers from the upper twenties to the lower twenties. And we think that's a much better ratio for teachers in those particular classroom settings. We're also requesting the addition of a halftime world language position. And, you know, this, we've sort of kicked this one around a little bit. Right now, with Spanish and German, those are the two language choices that we have, next year we'll have about 34 point something kids in each section. That will be the average that we'll have in each section, 34. I know the district through HSD 2025 is, you know, we've been working on other options with world language and even so far as maybe altering the way in which it's provided and the curriculum is delivered in the system. So when we got to this, we found ourselves in a little bit of a dilemma. We certainly didn't want the middle school to be the entity that was establishing what a third world language might be for the entire school district. So we were looking for an option that we thought would be very positive and productive for our students and at the same time reduce those numbers. And we have come upon our third world language would be American Sign Language. That's what we would like to promote as a one-year, short-term again, as a one-year plan until we are in a position and the board is in a position to determine how they wish to view the world language program in the district. This is a sort of a stopgap measure, there's no doubt about that, trying to reduce the large class sizes that we have. So we are proposing that and we believe that 34 plus in a classroom is way too much for any subject and would require an entirely different set of mentors to get teachers through that particular experience. The facility in this case, and one of the reasons we feel that this is pretty important here, again, we're going to be moving teachers from classroom to classroom to classroom. And these teachers will once again be in six areas on a cart, moving about the building. That's the last resort. That's the last thing that we have available to us. We do not have a space that any teacher could now just call their own. They have to move throughout the building and would do so continually in order to make this happen. The facility will be impacted very quickly in this way. We have one very large storage space area in the building. It's directly east of the gymnasium and south of the boys locker room. And it's a nice-sized area. We need to go in and change its primary function. We need to remodel in that area and create a classroom space in that storage room. We need to do that so that we can then, like the domino theory, move some people around elsewhere in the building into classroom space that befits their programs. If we're able to remodel that space, that enables us to be a little bit more flexible in terms of moving some of our programs around. The space we're primarily talking about, as you see in the handout, is OTPT. And we, what we like about it right now, as far as the plan is concerned, is we're able to move that space down next to the swimming pool, close to the swimming pool where we also have zero entry. And the teachers engaged in that program think that's a positive move for us to get those two rooms fairly close together. So we're proposing that and then that the other portion of that space would be devoted to locker room space for both physical education and athletics. The athletic piece is particularly important to us when we have exceptional participation. We had almost 170 students playing football last year and we had no place for them to locker and keep their equipment. So that was problematic for us. But in doing that, we'll be able to move some of the classrooms around and acquire space that will enable teachers to function more positively with their kids. Now, it's not without cost. You remodel a significant storage space and now what are you going to do with the stuff that we had stored in there? And again, the domino theory is in effect. Most of you are familiar with our multipurpose room. We have concerts and programs in that particular area. There is an alcove area. It's the area that is tiled, just adjacent to the multipurpose room. We believe it's necessary now to put some sort of collapsible sliding divider across the front of that alcove, what would be considered sort of a stage area, and put that divider up and use that area for storage to put the risers and the stage, the portable stage that we have, the music shelves, bandshelves and chairs, the racks of chairs that we have in that particular area. It does negatively impact the multipurpose room. I mean, clearly it does that, but we really don't have much in the way of other options to take a look at at this time. Also to accommodate size, I just briefly mentioned, we have purchased this year some lockers for next year, again, trying to keep kids in their house areas as opposed to sending them down or putting a bay of lockers in a hallway someplace. We've purchased additional lockers. Currently, we have 126. We're going to add 14 more in each house area. And just so that you know, in this building, from the beginning, we were designed for 1,125 students. This gives us a locker capacity for 1,260. So, you know, we're pushing the limits in terms of what we're able to, I think, facilitate here. I think finally, as we begin to get larger class sizes coming to us from the elementary ranks, we're going to also have to be looking at additional staffing in our core areas. This time it would be in math and language arts. And that's definitely on the horizon for us within a year or two. And we need to just be aware of the fact that as these larger groups move through the system, it's going to impact us coming out of the elementary, it impacts us first and it will impact Ed and the high school next. And we'll need to be looking at some sort of adjustments when they finally get to the eighth grade as well. The last item that I have in terms of additional space needs, that is a large group, but we're going to have issues with band, choir, orchestra, you know, physical education. We have huge participation in our athletic programs, which is what we want to continue to have. And just large group spaces are going to become an issue here pretty soon. So, in a nutshell, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
You know, our middle school has-
Space needs. You had a wonderful orchestra presentation and, you know, orchestras really shouldn't be banished to practice in a cafeteria. I think acoustically, there might be something in error there.
Designed as a very large middle school, oftentimes middle schools are 600 to 750 approximate size, and yet its design really works well. And one of the things it does is it breaks down the size of the building into these houses so that students aren't seeing 1,000 students, other students at times. So we do have a large middle school and the district had the foresight to build that, but yet we are out of room at that middle school. And again, it's a short-term solution. And I know Facilities and Grounds talked about that. Dick, I don't know if you have any comments to add?
Not in any length, but, you know, I think one of the things that I would remind the board on is that, you know, the site that we have out at the middle school, approximately 1,200 students, we have an elementary school with approximately 600. So that's 1,800 students going to a fairly restrictive site presents a lot of traffic problems. And I hear the community problems with access into the high school. We're only bringing 16, 15, 1,700 kids to this site of the high school and we're sending 1,800 out to the middle school and elementary school at Hudson Prairie. So there's going to be some constraints out there. And we introduce a lot of cars and a lot of buses into that site. And they all, by and large, funnel through that intersection out at Vine and Carmichael. But just a closing comment real quickly that Mr. Koch did come in front of the facilities committee. And I think the thing that I would leave with the board is that that school, the middle school, has been a successful educational concept with the house concept and we're at the point where that's going to start crumbling on us. And you can always shove a few more kids in, but the more you do that, the more that it invalidates the house concept. So I think it's a challenge to the board and it's going to be a challenge to the administration, but bottom line, it's going to be a challenge to the community to commit to the integrity of the house concept if the community thinks that's a valid educational tool.
Could I just chime in a bit? I want to say right now to Dan and everybody listening, I guess, I too am committed to the house concept. I really do. I'm a firm believer and I think it's a great way to transition the elementary school out of high school, so we don't have our kids lost in a large educational setting. So I'm on board 100% on the house concept. And so I'm troubled when, you know, we have to make these accommodations that put that at risk. So I just want you to know that it's for myself individually. I have a strong commitment to that concept. I really want to thank you, Dan, for bringing forth this plan. It's very good, very detailed and, you know, it certainly helps us. And I appreciate your creativity at making a less than ideal situation work. Teachers on carts, don't like it, don't like it at all. That should really be a last resort. I'm sure that it will be, but that's something that I don't think we should accept as a permanent solution and-
There's one of the answers to your question that the universities don't provide either, how to teach on a cart.
Cart, new elective, Dan, huh? Okay. And certainly, I guess, just underscores the need that this board needs to be working on that secondary solution. Dick, when he was talking earlier, mentioned that was one of his somewhat disappointments that we hadn't been able to quite nail down a plan for that and I do concur. There's a lot of reasons I'm going to miss my friend and colleague, Dick Minnick, but his leadership on the facilities committee is certainly not going to be the least of them. He has been a very strong force for that and we're going to have a vacuum to fill, but we do need to work on this and sooner rather than later. So I just want you to know that I'm hopeful that the board will be going to tackle this big problem very soon.
And I just want to add my two cents to that in that I just want to thank you for your flexibility and extend that appreciation to your teachers and your staff. I just really think that you're doing amazing work under really just what's getting to be kind of heinous circumstances. It's just not okay that you're placed in the position every year of having to, you know, scrape for every square inch of space and find miraculous ways to do things that are pretty standard, like teaching basic curriculum, you know? It seems to me that that kind of energy and creativity would be better used by the district in our expanded vision for excellence for the district in terms of the creativity that could be involved in delivering curriculum that is exciting and challenging and the challenges should be that, not what square inch you're going to put it in. And so I just wanted to extend my gratitude for your flexibility and your courage to continue to just stand before your own staff and faculty and say, well, our creativity is going to be used on a space issue again this year. So thanks. That's the hard part of it.
Brian?
Just a couple of comments. First of all, thanks for putting this plan together, Dan. Getting creative, we have to, so appreciate it. And also thanks for your time and Mr. Lucas's time on the 2025 committee as well. Just one comment, it's a little bit tactical. I would just, the only thing here, I just maybe just challenge a little bit is a track on careers. I mean, could we do something else with that six weeks of time, whether it be world affairs or something? We have FYI program in ninth grade. I just think we have six weeks that we, is there some, if we looked at it one more time, could we do something else with that six weeks for those students?
You know, certainly that's a possibility. As a matter of fact, I was just at a luncheon today. When you talk about careers, there was a very strong focus. The luncheon we attended, Mary was there as well and so was Mr. Lucas, was it with the, I think it was called the chancellor's luncheon at UW River Falls today. And the very thing we're talking about with regard to careers in the area of sciences, you know, and math was a key point that they were telling, we need to get more kids interested, you know, in those particular areas. So, and certainly I appreciate the direction you're going and I think that if we get creative in that particular area, we may be able to do something with careers that up until this point in time has not been traditionally done in terms of opportunities that may be available for kids in the sciences or engineering, you know, those particular areas.
I mean, that would work. But I just, I just get a little concerned with FYI and then the thing in careers in the middle school is-
I can appreciate that.
And I guess I echo Brian's concern about that. I'd like to see that six weeks spent with kids doing something amazing. And I know that, like I said earlier, your energy has got to be focused on meeting space needs. I'm sorry for that because I'd like to see that six weeks be something that just those kids can get involved in and just just rock their socks off, you know? And if it's something that involves science and math in a way that engages them creatively and emotionally and points them in the direction of all the things they could do with this and the focus is really on the content rather on, you know, let's explore some careers, I think that would be just amazing. Really high functioning, you know, where our vision is for education here, so.
I certainly appreciate the comments that you had about our program and energizing our students. our students and getting them excited about the future and science, math, technology, and so forth. Space is a limitation to that, and that's one thing we have to realize. That doesn't mean it can be in this situation, but we do have teachers, in this case, who will be moving from classroom to classroom with their stuff. And it really does limit some of what can be done as a result of that, and we've got to acknowledge that. It doesn't mean that we can't challenge our students or our teachers and staff, but it does offer an additional challenge that's difficult for us to do. I know, Brian, one of the things you talked about was robotics, and that would be very, very difficult in that kind of situation. So, limitations, yes. We have lots of creative people as well. And I think Dan needs the staffing that will come during the staff that Nancy talked about. And we can take a look at the careers and see how we can design that in a way that is rigorous and relevant at the same time and focused on the needs of our students.
Sounds good. I'm completely agreeing with that. I just don't want another broad-brush kind of career overview. I think there's a better thing we do with that six weeks.
Sandy and Dan, that's your challenge.
Okay, thanks, Dan, for that report.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the report by Mary regarding space for learning, projections, building capacities.
Hopefully, those of you in the audience have picked up the graphs that were on the back table. If, I don't know if there's copies left, but if not, feel free to go back and pick those up. That's what we're going to be referencing, and the board has both those graphs and a table with the actual numbers and data that relate to those graphs. You remember last month, in our 612 space for learning, that Dr. Hazel Reinhardt, experienced demographer, came and updated our student enrollment projections, and Dick Carlstrom came and presented information about a housing analysis, which he has added a slight bit of information to since that time. We asked him to do a study area in the EP Rock, new attendance area, and so he has done that as well. So, today, the task is to look at actual enrollment and the capacities, actual enrollment, projected enrollment, and then the capacities of our buildings and where that puts us by level. Just as a reference point, the past 10 years, starting in 1998, 99, Dr. Reinhardt referenced in her report that the total enrollment increased 1,334 students, and that was a 34% increase, certainly a huge increase in a district, in any district. So, let's look at our elementary schools, and we're going to look at them in relationship to next year. Our enrollment this year is 2,409 students, but we're going to move that forward with additional capacity with Rivercrest. And that gives us a capacity across the district of 2,940 elementary students, K through 12, K through 5, I'm sorry. And Dr. Reinhardt looked at projections in two different ways. She has, as you know, a low projection and a high projection. And we're looking at a 10-year period here. I want to reiterate and have us all understand that each individual year will fluctuate. So, we do not expect this exact number on any particular year. We are looking at a trend over time and the increase over time. So, although we continue to monitor our enrollments, and we'll continue to do that, it is a trend over time that she's indicating here. And certainly, through each of our levels, there is significant growth that she is projecting. So, at the elementary level, if you would look at our, the low projections, we reach those projections, we reach capacity and start to exceed it. And again, it's an estimation in her projections, and that's 2015, 2016. Somewhere between that low projection and the high projection, she's really saying that our students' enrollment will fall. And in the high projection, we reach capacity and exceed it in the year 2012, 13. And if we looked at low projections over that 10-year period, the low projection at elementary would mean that we would gain, if it was exact, and again, it's not exact, 561 students for an increase of 23%. And that's another school, another elementary school. So, it's just, that's where the low projection comes in. And this growth at the elementary certainly shows us and indicates that she's projecting that we will have growth that will continue throughout our system. When you put that together with the birth rates as well, as we saw a trend of those going up in her projections. The high rate of growth gives us 852 new students and a 35% growth, which would really meet that 10 years of growth, K-12 district-wide, the last 10 years. So, elementary, certainly, we have some space with Rivercrest, that's good. And yet, certainly, that space, based on these projections, will be used in a fairly short period of time in the life of a school, and we'll be looking at more space to come and need in the district. And I know Mr. Minnick has talked about that numerous times. The middle school has a capacity of 1,125 seats, if all the students were in the right grade levels and so forth, and Dan's talked about that. And you can see all the red numbers on the page indicating how many seats we're actually missing, and the chart certainly shows that as well. When you look at the green line, that is the capacity, and the two low and high projections certainly over that already. So, we start off with this year minus or missing 30 seats, and that just continues to escalate whether you use the low numbers or the high numbers at middle school. We're out of space. The low, using the low projections over that 10-year period, we would have a growth of 424 students. Using the high, it's 710 students. And if you remember, I referenced before, 700 is oftentimes the size of a middle school. So, that growth range, actually, from low to high is a 30% increase compared to a 61% increase at our middle school level. That's absolutely huge. The high school with an enrollment of 1,680, not enrollment, I'm sorry, capacity, and you'll remember, we have had a short-term solution at the high school that we've already implemented, moving the district offices out, which increased the capacity. And you can see with our actual enrollment, we're basically at capacity, seven seats someplace or other. And certainly, we have other students that are taking up those spaces. This is K-12 district enrollment, and we do have open enrollment students who are in the building too. So, if you look at that, we do have a period of time here at the high school where the numbers from the elementary that are moving into the middle school and moving on start to enter the high school and drive it well over capacity. That happens very quickly between the two, the low and the high. We start exceeding it certainly in the low projections in 2011. And in the high projections, just the year before that, we're exceeding the capacity. So, those are very close together in the range. If we use those low numbers at the high school, we would have over that 10-year, 369 more students, up to the high projection of 740 more students. And you can see over that 10-year period, projections indicating certainly 2,000-plus high school, four-year high school for us. And that's certainly a question that we need to look at and ask our community. Is that the kind of a size of a high school this community supports as we look at solutions for space? We also need to think about another issue that isn't reflected on this page, and that's the adequacy of the space to really deliver our program, deliver our program for the 21st century. And certainly, we think of HSD 2025 and all of the program that we're delivering now that we will continue to deliver as well. So, adequacy of space is a whole nother issue that is not reflected on the page. That is another question and issues that we have to wrestle with. In the next 10 years, if you look district-wide, and I just refer you back to that first statement I said, last 10 years, our growth was, what did I say, 34%. In the next 10 years, based on these projections, and I only did the low numbers, it would be a 26% growth over that 10-year period. Very, very significant. Might not beat the growth from the 10 years before, but still enormously significant, particularly when you're out of space. If we looked at the high projections, which I didn't do, then that would be, may equal that. Next steps, I think we need to revisit the, certainly, the Facilities Task Force work and start there. And I'd also like any suggestions that you have of information that you would like, directions you would like us to go as we look at our enrollments, look at solutions based on the new data that we have. So, I'd open it up for any comments and suggestions from the board.
Okay, board members, any comments? I think the data from Hazel Reinhardt and the housing study was worthwhile, and I think it gives us, you know, some more information to work with as we wrestle with these difficult facility issues, so.
Will we have a board work session on this?
Well, that's something we have to determine, but that certainly could be something that we need to look at in the future. I don't know if that's in the next couple of months. Our new board will be seated next month, and then committees will come the following month. So, I would work with the president and determine if that's the next step we should have or if we should wait a little period of time. Suggestions that you have?
I think sooner is better.
Certainly, it's a topic that, you know, has been on our minds, and, you know, we'll have HSD 2025, those recommendations, next month. So, with all of that information coupled with this, we should be in a pretty good position to start, you know, having some serious discussions about how we need and want to go forward, so. And certainly, we'll have the community involved in that process as well. Unless board members have any comments or questions, we'll-
You know, I guess, Dan, just make a comment. I think in many respects, not much has changed. I think a lot of the, you know, recommendations from the Facilities Task Force really, you know, still stand on their merit. We, you know, we decided to go with the phased-in approach, which was the community's direction, and we have our elementary school. And, you know, solutions were proposed for secondary space, and I think we have to look at those hard, and I think, as Cindy said, we need to look at those soon and move forward. The only debate is somewhat over the rate of growth, and certainly, one has to acknowledge that may slow a bit, but it's still coming. We have buildings that are now at capacity, and they'll just become increasingly over capacity as time goes by. So, it's a problem that needs to be tackled and soon.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I mean, it's pretty daunting when you look at the middle school being all red, and we talk about secondary space for education. And we have a problem right now at the middle school. Just, it's a challenge. I mean, it's a challenge given the economic situation and everything else going on in the kind of the macro, at the macro view, but here, we're faced, we have a problem right in front of us. And so, I think it's just tougher when you kind of get their hands around, given everything else going on in the economy and the tax burdens and everything else, but we have a problem. And so, it's going to be a real challenge to kind of put together the solution that the community can support, and we're going to need to get their input. We have a problem, we need to fix it.
And I think that these new board members that are coming on next month seem to me, from all that I've heard them say, to be very already engaged in this, you know, in learning about the issues. And I just don't think it's going to take them three to six months to get up to speed. I think they're there and ready to hit the ground running. And so, I guess I would just say that, you know, I think we've waited long enough to have a decision-making discussion, and we've tossed these numbers around a lot. And I think that if we all took a really serious look over the next, you know, 30 to 60 days at the materials that we've been given, the new materials as well as the old stuff, and really do the work of getting our arms around it, and I would invite our new board members to do the same, I think that we should be making decisions soon. You know, I would say we don't have to wait until next fall to start really, you know, engaging in public discussion. I think we should start now. What I would like us not to do is offer a referendum in December. So, what I think that, you know, we really have to talk about the calendar and moving forward more quickly rather than less, and giving our community a target date for decision-making earlier rather than later so that they have some sense of, I don't want to say urgency, but, you know, the importance of getting the right information as we go out to talk to them about that, and asking their hard questions, starting right now, not once we propose the referendum. If that's the case, then let's propose a referendum way early and give people a year to ask us the questions because we need to do a better job with that this time around. It seems to me that the most serious questions came after all of the public discussion that we had. And I don't, I don't see that we, I see that we can improve on that process.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll move on to the topics for action. We have consent items with personnel and expenditures. Mark, do you have the total expenditures amount? $32,2359.51 are the expenditures, and also included in the consent items are, is the 2008, 09 open enrollment, which is also in your board packet? Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
I just want to clarify, the open enrollment list is at your, at the table. It isn't in your packet, just-
Move to approve the consent items, including moving the Director of Financial Services to be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $3,223,359.51.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If those oppose, motion's approved. Nancy, do you want to take us into the 08, 09 staffing proposal?
Okay. All right. The material associated with this agenda item begins on page 20. It's a four-page document. Last night, back-to-back, the Finance Committee and thereafter, the Personnel Committee considered this information in more detail. The 2008, 2009 staffing work began in November with the development of the process and the criteria. And then in December, the Personnel Committee of the Board reviewed the process and the criteria, and the administration moved ahead to begin their work to identify needs, collect evidence to support the needs, to do research on best practice, and to look for ways in which to reallocate existing resources to meet the needs. The building administrators, the coordinators, the supervisors met with a variety of district administrators and also our Director of Financial Services for cost implications. They each completed written requests documenting their work and the criteria. Each of their requests address, there were multiple criteria identified earlier, and generally, they focused in three areas. First of all- First of all, and most importantly, evidence that the request would impact student learning through the educational programs and services to our students. Secondly, focus on enhanced collaborative professional practices, again, with the goal of improving student learning. And then third, the infrastructure to support our growing district. Each administrator met individually with me to prepare for the day-long collaboration of all principals and all district administrators that we held on March 14th. We started that day by reviewing the norms for a successful collaborative decision-making. Then we reviewed and clarified all of the criteria, and then we took actually several hours for each of the administrators to present their requests and to talk with their colleagues about the requests and answer any questions that they might have. Later, we went through several rounds of filtering, list reduction, and nominal group process, and throughout, we were looking for ways to reorganize and reallocate our resources to reduce the costs. When the day was done, we had consensus over what we presented last evening to the two committees and what is in your board material tonight. In summary, there's, if you look at the board material now, there are three areas of staffing over which several committees earlier planned and directed the administration, but the first area would be new staffing that was processed through the procedure that I just described. And in that, and that's on the second page of that document, there were a total of 30 new staff requested by administrators for next year, and 14 of the 30 positions were certified staff and 16 were support. And through this collaborative decision-making process and within generally the funds allocated by the board for new staffing, the administration is recommending the approval of 20 new staff, 10 certified, 10 support, that you see detailed on that chart. And of the 20 positions that we're recommending for funding, six are recommended at a reduced FTE. We did that through the collaborative process. And four are recommended at a lesser or no cost due to reallocation of resources. And three are recommended at no additional cost due to reduced FTE and applying some available grant funding. The second page of the document, the next chart, has to do with the opening of Rivercrest and the new staffing associated with that. We were able to gain certain efficiencies with our transfer and reassignment of elementary staff, looking over the distribution of existing staff and looking at scheduling and trying to achieve certain efficiencies with that. So that particular chart details the staff that we feel are required for the opening of Rivercrest. And then lastly, the third page shows the classroom teachers that resulted from the elementary boundary changes that you approved a few months ago, and also the expansion of the orchestra program, and you heard that report earlier this evening. The costs are indicated for each of these proposals for new staffing and estimated additional salary cost to the operating budget is $337,916. For the opening of Rivercrest, again, the estimated additional salary cost to the operating budget would be $455,777. And the boundary changes in orchestra, $262,500. Really a unique year for us. Typically, it's the first page that you would see, but with the opening of Rivercrest and with the changing of the boundaries, we had some additional work to do and, of course, some additional proposals to make to you. So with that...
Dan, if I could just weigh in here?
Yeah.
The Personnel Committee did meet last night, and the first thing I want to do is really applaud the administration for the process they used. I don't want to repeat what Nancy said, but it began last fall, was very rigorous, very comprehensive. Basically, nothing was automatic. Everyone had to really mount a defense for any new positions and additional staff and have supporting evidence for that. In addition to that, they were subjected to further scrutiny by the Personnel Committee last night. We went through this with something like a fine-tooth comb, and Nancy, again, was, had to offer us supporting evidence for these positions. They came within range of the budgetary amount that this board had decided for additional staffing, and the committee supports the staffing recommendations as Nancy just presented.
I would like to add that the page that talks about the opening of Rivercrest, when we went to referendum, we shared information with the community about the cost, the estimated cost of opening Rivercrest in a way that was equitable with our other buildings, and that's what you see on this page. And I know Nancy and Tim worked very diligently to come up with that amount. I believe it was $800,000, and this is within that range or underneath it.
I note too, Nancy, that when we look at the 20 new positions, several of these positions are costed out at a fairly low level, and that's because of the reallocating, either the reallocating of dollars or grant funds that were available.
Yeah, that's correct, and you can see actually on the chart for any of the positions that reallocation of resources were applied, and there are some costed at zero for the operating budget because they are grant-funded. And you can see that on the chart, which of those positions?
Is the grant dollars, are those short-term or...
Are they short-term? They're annually appropriated. You always need to be concerned, although it's never gone away for quite a few years of the, you know, the special education legislation. So what we tend to do is to apply grant funds to positions that we feel may not be long-term, but may be needed for a year or two.
Okay, thank you. Board members have any questions?
Dan, I had one question, and I'll direct this to Tim. I'm confused on the dollar amount for the Financial Services Manager. I would expect it would have been a little bit higher.
Well, as Nancy had mentioned, you've got under the column of reallocation of resources, those positions that are marked with that X have been, are positions that have been reduced or exactly what Nancy said, reallocated. So a position that was reduced, this is actually offsetting the cost of that position.
And it's also not an administrative-level position. It's not...
But it is a...
So it's at a lower cost.
It is a full-time position?
Yes.
Other questions, board members?
Just a comment. I have to say that this, being the first time using the kind of process that we used or they used, I just think it's an awesome process, and I think that it really is a better way to think about staffing. And I think that what we see in front of us being a really excellent piece of work in terms of considering how we spend dollars, and just the whole process as an educational process for our administrators, I think is a really amazing feat of accomplishment. And I'm just really, I'm really proud of the district for having gone through this process in terms of bringing these forward with the kind of cuts and decisions and evaluations that have been made about how to best use dollars and where to best use those dollars. And what comes out of this, I think, is just a really cohesive solution for this year that we haven't seen in the past, and I'm really pleased with it.
I think Cindy hit on something that we probably haven't said much, but I think all the administrators that are sitting back there who have been part of this process, I hope, would agree with me. We have talked a little bit about it, but it was a learning experience for us to go through in that we learned about the needs K-12 in a way we hadn't been aware of before. And so because of this process and the extensive nature of it, and also the creativity that came in to look at our resources and use them more effectively instead of just adding a position that we might want or need, this was a way to really look at how we're doing business and to make ourselves more effective at student learning and support to student learning. So I commend our administrators for everything that they had to go do in this process, which was a lot of work, but I think overall, as an administrative team, we, you hit it on the head, we gained quite a bit from going through the process.
Okay, thank you. Unless there's other comments, questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval of those staffing recommendations.
I move to approve the staffing recommendations.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If those oppose, motion is approved. Before we move on to the next item related to the Gateway Underpass, we do have a request to speak, Steve Hermsen. If you'd like to come up here and... Steve, if you could state your name and address and...
Thank you. Steve Hermsen, 813 Harborview Road here in Hudson. I'm here tonight to speak to the agreement that you, the board, is about to enter with the county over the tunnel between Rivercrest and YMCA. Now, I got to admit, I was pretty fired up prior to this meeting, and then reading the board packet tonight, after seeing the costs, I think it dwindled a little bit. But we have, we were, the people were led to believe that this cost of this tunnel was going to be in the $250,000 range, and that the Y would share in the cost of that tunnel. Now, to refresh the board, back in, I'm going to take a guess here, Tim can correct me. I think it was about in October, there was the, I think it was a feasibility study that was done, and it was brought before the board on the concept of what that tunnel would be like. I believe the board and the YMCA shared in the cost of that tunnel, and if I recall right, the price of that feasibility study was around $40,000, I hope. I seem to recall, and I couldn't find it, but I seem to recall seeing a check being cut from the school district to Stevens Engineering for about $20,000. So I'm going to assume that the Y picked up and paid the other half of that study. Since that time, the board had decided to move forward with that, with that concept, and a letter was generated from Stevens Engineering that came in December to the school district outlining how the proposal and how that project would advance. And they gave, and I happened to find the letter, and they gave the cost of what that would take before construction. And the totaling of the cost came to about $17,000. Now, I can go back through, I did, I went back through and followed the expenses from the school district to Stevens Engineering, and counting up what's included in tonight's expenditures came to $16,700 and some odd dollars. Okay, that seems to jive. Now, and to maybe steal a little of Tim's thunder tonight, we're going to see that the cost for the tunnel is, from a county standpoint, was roughly $32,000. From the Stevens Engineering standpoint and the bids that are going to come out here, I think I saw the low bid was around $45,000. So we're seeing a total cost roughly, I think, $77,000. That amount is well under what the public was led to believe would be $250,000. Now, the board, at the February 12th meeting, you guys approved the use of $125,000 to be, that you would share in the cost, divided equally with the YMCA for this tunnel. To get to my point, going through the expenses, in the shared costs, I can find nowhere where the YMCA has reimbursed the school district for half of the feasibility study. I protested the agreement that the school district has entered into with the county in that the YMCA was not made a part of the agreement to share the cost with the county, which I felt was good at my belief that the cost was going to be well over $125,000, thinking $250,000. I didn't believe that the county could enter into the agreement with you guys because the board had only approved $125,000. So the Y had to be made a part of that contract. Now, granted, I veered in that, given the bid that has came out. The board has approved $125,000. The county says, "We're good because we're within the amount." But it still brings up the question. We have, why hasn't the Y been required? Why haven't we seen any cost or any donation or any shared cost from the YMCA listed in the records? I paid pretty decent money for these, and I hope that they're correct, but it ain't here. So the only thing I can, so the next question comes up is, why should me, as I as a taxpayer, believe that the Y is even going to contribute a dime to this thing? You as a board have done, there has been no action here, no paperwork that says the Y will even repay you guys. This seems to be nothing but a behind-the-door agreement. So there's nothing really protecting the taxpayer to say that they will pay half. I'm curious, well, what, you know, what does the board going to do to ensure that you get your half, or we should say, our half of those expenses paid? Otherwise, this thing is nothing more than a loan, and I don't believe the district can loan the YMCA dollars. That's my concern, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, Steve, thank you. We'll move on to that item having to do with the Gateway and Underpass. Tim, are you going to cover that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
If you look on page, I'm sorry, it's actually the final copy of the contract is a loose leaf with the handout. There's actually a map, topographical map, and which is Exhibit A of that agreement. And this is for the county portion of the work for the installation of the culvert. Also covers the maintenance agreement between the school district and the county. And so if you look on, if you look on the pages, Page 2, under installation costs, you can see the estimated cost of installation of the culvert is $32,000. And maintenance of the tunnel, it's agreed that the school district shall maintain the tunnel, retaining walls... the tunnel, it's agreed that the school district shall maintain the tunnel, retaining walls, paths, and pay all those associated costs. Now, this is one part of an agreement. This is with the school district and the county, and then we'll have a sub-agreement with the YMCA, which will be modeled after this agreement. And this agreement was, was approved by the St. Croix County Transportation Department, or Transportation Committee today. So with that, I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Questions for Tim regarding this agreement?
I have a question. Why, I guess, kinda to Steve's point, question, why is there not an agreement yet with the Y? Why don't we have anything on paper or?
We have a draft right now. And how we decided that probably the easiest way to approach this was to approach it with the agreement between the two governmental entities and then for the district and the YMCA to have a sub-agreement from this agreement, which we have a draft right now.
So, Tim, when would we expect that draft, or the final agreement to come to the board?
We will have that one ready for the next board meeting.
And just because of, again, Mr. Hermsen's questions, what's the total cost of this gonna be now? Do we have a better idea?
We think, we think the cost is gonna, is going to be under the $250. But we're waiting to get some information back on the actual box culverts. And those are probably going to run somewhere in the $100,000 range. So we really, and maybe I'll just address that right now, we really have three segments of cost here. The first piece is for the county to install the culverts as they're doing the, doing the road improvements at the site. The second cost is mainly out of, outside the county right-of-way cost, which is the bid that will, the bids that you'll review and approve tonight. So that covers work outside of the right-of-way. And then the third cost are materials. So at this point, as we've gone through the process, we think it's going to come in under, until I get the costs on the culvert and materials, I couldn't tell you exactly how much under that will be. But we do think it will be under the total of $250. And maybe I ought to address some of the other points made tonight. Stevens Engineers, up until this point, we were looking at a total cost of about $8,000 that they were going to, going to charge us. We actually worked out a reduced fee. I think it originally was maybe $16,000 to go through the design process and up to the construction documents. They agreed to a reduced fee of $8,000. And the YMCA has, in fact, cut checks back to the district. We have billed the YMCA and they have, in fact, shared in the cost of those expenditures. I know Tom Cranz is here tonight, the Director of Camping and Director of Camp St. Croix, so he can certainly add information if needed. And we have received money. I can't talk to the $16,000 that Steve's alluding to. We also have Stevens Engineers working on Rivercrest. They are the civil engineer for the project. So we obviously have payments going to them for that project as well. But at this point, our cost is roughly about $8,000, half of that to be split with the YMCA. So a net to the district of about $4,000. So I hope that answers it. If there are any other questions that were brought up, please, please ask and I will try to, off the top of my head, try to remember to answer those.
Okay. Any questions for Tim or Tom with the YMCA?
I have a question about the maintenance again. It says in here on number four, "The school district shall maintain the tunnel or gateway, retaining walls and path." In your sub-agreement with the Y, I don't think we as a district, if we're sharing the tunnel, should be responsible for paying for all of it for the maintenance. So in theirs, will it also say that, I mean, how are we gonna make it like it's your half of the year, our half of the year, what's gonna happen?
Our, yes, because this agreement's just between the county and the district. It addresses what the district responsibility is. And in the sub-agreement with YMCA, then we'll address that, we will share maintenance 50/50 with the YMCA and the school district.
So, Tom from the YMCA, just thank you for being here and for entering into this agreement with the district. I think it's awesome.
Dan, I have a comment. Since I've been so involved with the Gateway to the YMCA camp in the, well, St. Croix River. And it's more a question, I think, for Mr. Hermsen. And first of all, Mr. Hermsen, congratulations on your election to the county board. I think you'd be congratulated for that. But I was a little bit confused if you were appearing in front of the school board this evening as an elected public member or if you were appearing as a private citizen. You should clarify that in the future. And then just as a final comment, I look forward, as a private citizen coming in front of the board that you've been elected to, when you have an open forum and open communication and community input portion of your agenda. So I look forward to that, that opportunity. Because I'm sure your board meetings are open to the public and open for public comment. Right. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'll, unless there's any other questions or comments, I'll entertain...
I do have just one more comment. And really, it's because I think a lot of times our citizens, and we do have open records laws that allow citizens to get information. And clearly, Mr. Hermsen is one who has really taken that to heart and done a lot of that. And sometimes I think that just, not everything is, you know, is gonna be found in the, in the checkbook records and in the, you know, in the papers correspondence. And as Tim explained, and I think people need to really understand that, that what Mr. Hermsen identified is, is true. There have been such-and-such dollars paid on this project or that project. But that doesn't necessarily mean that's the total amount of the project. When he sees the agreement with the county that it'll be, you know, $32,000 for their piece of the, of the construction, that doesn't necessarily take into account that there are two additional phases to that construction. And so when he comes to those conclusions by himself without really talking to the board or asking administration, you know, about these discrepancies, I think it really causes him and certainly other people in the public who come to those same conclusions, a lot of stress and anxiety. And so I guess I just would say that, you know, this has been a very complex process. There's no building process that isn't. And I really want to recognize, because I feel that sometimes it's easy for people to, to get some of this information sort of out of the big picture, that it looks in some way that we've been sort of insinuated that somehow the district has approved $250,000 project that's only gonna cost us $32,000. And it simply is not the case. That is one tiny piece of a, of a more complex construction picture with several additional phases that will bring the cost up much closer to what we expected to pay in the first place. And so I would just urge people who have, who heard that and have questions about it and feeling like somehow something didn't, you know, doesn't shake right, I would say call somebody who knows the whole picture. Call Mr. Erickson or call Mr. Chernahoy or any of us who can help you, you know, to answer those questions. We don't want to be putting you in a position where you're wondering by yourselves what the heck we're doing. So I just wanted to add that piece. I think that this is a great project, really. And the cooperation with the Y has been spectacular. And I'm elected here, you know, to look at that stuff. And I have to say that, you know, you have confidence in me. I was elected twice to this board and I'm proud to have been elected to the board. And citizens have confidence that I'm here doing the job for them. And I have confidence in the job that's been done on this project. So I wanna convey that.
Okay, thanks Cindy. You know, I think, you know, we've had a really good relationship with the YMCA, not only with this particular project, but, you know, in years past with a lot of the activities and projects that we've partnered with them. And so, you know, I have all the confidence in the YMCA that, you know, they'll hold true to the arrangement here and will fortify that arrangement with these sub-agreements. So that will take place. So, that said, I'll entertain a motion for the agreement with the county that's before us.
I will so move.
We have a motion.
Second.
In a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion's approved. We'll move on to the next item for the awarding of the bids for the Rivercrest construction work under Highway F, Gateway Underpass. Tim?
Okay, again, back to the Gateway. And this is the work that is being done outside of the right-of-way, as I had mentioned before. We receive three bids, one from Zappa Brothers from Hudson, Albrightson Excavating out of Woodville, and Miller Excavating out of Stillwater. And we can see down at the very bottom, under total base bid, Zappa Brothers is the low bid at $45,987. And then there's also an alternate bid for pavement, paving of the trail at $7,040. And they have submitted bid bond with their bid, and everything is in order. So we would recommend approval of Zappa Brothers for that work.
Okay. Any questions for Tim?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Proud to be using a local bidder.
Yeah, we certainly, in our experience with the Zappa Brothers, I think, over time has been very, very good. So there's no other discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion's approved. Thanks, Tim. Okay, we'll move on to awarding the bids for the Rivercrest Safety and Security System. Tim, again?
Okay, if you turn to page 29, you'll see the bid package for the security system for Rivercrest. And that has been reviewed in depth by Hoffman, by our ITS department to make sure that it's compatible with the systems that we already have in place at our other sites. And that includes intrusion, fire, and security systems. So the low bid goes to Sentry Systems out of White Bear Lake for $61,012. And again, we would recommend that you approve that low bid.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept a low bid of $61,012 awarded to Sentry Systems Incorporated, White Bear Lake, Minnesota.
Mr. President, I have a quick question before we go to vote on this.
Okay.
Second.
Let's, we have a motion and a second. By sending, now discussion?
Just a quick question. Maybe you know Dick or Tim, you know, with the fire we had over at EP Rock and things like that, is there anything we're doing differently here that, you know, you know, automatic notification to fire department or is there anything we've done differently here or is it not, we're not able to or?
Well, we, yeah, we're in the process of updating our fires, our fire alert systems to the fire departments. And I can't speak in detail on this particular bid because we had a, we had a separate group looking at it pretty in-depth. But it would, and I'm gonna make an assumption here that it would include automatic notification to either fire department or, or an alarm company.
We have talked about that and that is in the system. Certainly, there's a sprinkler system. There's a lot of different components that are required by code now that Rivercrest will have because of new construction. But the fire alarm system, we have talked about that it will be armed to alert the authorities.
That's a good question.
And I just, is the, this doesn't include security for the Gateway? Just at the actual building? It's nothing to do with security or cameras or anything?
Cameras, no, no, this is just, just for Rivercrest, the building itself.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion's approved. Last item under action items is the Rivercrest furniture. Tim, are you gonna speak to that?
Yes, I'll take that one too. On page 30 is memo and just, we had a, we had a committee that went through and worked with, through the U.S. Communities Program, which is a program that has different manufacturers of school equipment and supplies, school furniture. And they secure pricing that is, is as low as the manufacturers can go. They cannot sell below that to anyone else. And there are different manufacturers that participate in that program or that are allowed to participate in that program, Verco being one of them. And so we had a committee put together and we worked with Verco to outfit the new classrooms at Rivercrest. And so, and also the Media Center. And so there are a few different companies, not just Verco, but there are some other companies involved in this also that participate in U.S. Communities. And so to kind of streamline the process, this is a process we use, we feel we have some, some very good pricing on, on the furniture and equipment. And it does meet LEED requirements. And so the total cost is $382,135.42. And that price includes installation. And that is part of the, the furniture fixture and equipment budget for the construction of Rivercrest. I'd ask that you approve, whilst moving forward on purchasing that equipment.
Questions for Tim?
Just one. I work in a LEED building in Minnesota and we actually used like-new office furniture that was LEED certified with the, with the, you know, amount of daylight and everything else. Is that, is that something that we've considered or is it feasible or is it not available or?
Okay, I'm not familiar with, you're saying like-new, is that a brand name or is that, you're saying used furniture?
Yeah.
This, this program doesn't, doesn't deal with used furniture. It's actually a direct-from-the-manufacture program. So we're buying, we're really buying direct from the manufacturer.
Brian, I'll, I'll field that question. The furniture you're referring to is systems and there's a lot of it out there. And what, you just don't find used furniture, school furniture, on the used market like you do with systems. And so what you have is, it's not just used, it's refurbished and, yeah.
You would know, given your line of work.
It's so easy to find what you have, not easy to find what, what he's looking for.
Love, love the idea though.
Thank you.
It's just not out there.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the Rivercrest furniture.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President. Do we approve the contract with Verco for our furniture for Rivercrest?
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
In a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion's approved. We'll move on now to the committee reports. Dick, anything else?
Very briefly. Two items really were in front of us. One was the very same report we saw from Mr. Colke, middle school principal. I won't go into any detail on that. And then the second thing, we did go into a closed hearing regarding discussions on security within the, within the schools.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee, I'll, I'll take that one. We met the other day and we reviewed the staffing costs that Nancy went over this evening, so I won't touch on that again. We also looked at our draft budget goals, proposed... We also looked at our draft budget goals proposal. As you recall, in past years, we've set some budgetary goals for the school district to sort of use as a, as a directive with its budget. So I anticipate we'll probably have those to come to the board next month. Then we also had a discussion regarding our closed session topics that I won't go into, but that was the other topic, so. Personnel, Mark, do you have anything else to add to?
Not too much, Dan. Obviously, we also, as you just said, discussed the staffing '08, for '08, '09. And then we, in addition, had a closed session with discussions of compensation for various groups, including support staff, coordinators, administrators, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions either for myself, Dick, or Mark regarding any of the committee reports? I don't think we have any other citizens' requests to speak. I think we did address Steve's concerns and certainly Steve, you're welcome to, you know, come in and visit with any of us or with Tim to do a little more digging into some of the Stevens payments or bills. So we certainly can take a look at that. Otherwise, we'll, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent one, parent C, for the purpose of considering employment performance data in 2008, '09, compensation of support staff, coordinators, supervisors, principals, associate principals, directors, associate directors, and superintendent in 2007, '09, employment and compensation for psychologists, social workers, and counselors.
So move?
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote starting with Erica.
Sure. Your aye.
Kaiser shot, aye.
Minnich aye?
Chernahoy, aye.
Cremones, aye.
Bell aye.
Thank you, everyone. And again, thank you, Dick, for your work on the board. And Erica, thank you again.